Welcome to the June 8, 2022 School Committee Meeting. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Very exciting night. The first item of business is the announcement of our 21, 22 retirees. We just had an opportunity to celebrate them in the high school courtyard, which was really lovely, and we shared some memories and provided them all with a special gift from Wilmington Public Schools. For the purposes of the community, we wanted to make sure we announced their names and their years of service, so when Dr. Brand gets to you, I think he's already told you to come forward so that you can be on TV.[65.22][65.22](Laughter). Because there's many people out there who want to see you, I think, so here we go.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Bryson. We have with us this evening collectively years of service here in Wilmington as we prepare to say goodbye to 266 years of combined service for all of our retirees.[87.11][87.11](Applause). As Dr. Bryson said, we had the privilege a few moments ago to spend some time with our retirees as we prepare to say goodbye to them and as part of this, thank them for their service. So we're going to make this part a little bit briefer, but we'll ask folks if they will to come up in order, and I'll just share a couple of comments on them, and then we'll keep them at the front here for a photo op. So if you have your cameras, well, get them ready. Carol Trulli, if Carol could come forward. Ms. Trulli has 23 years of service here in Wilmington, having served as a computer literacy teacher at the Wilmington Middle School. Karen Vasali, Karen, if you could come forward? Karen has been with us here in Wilmington for 19 years as an educational assistant at the Wildwood School.
Don't go far.
Don't go, don't go.[148.13][148.13](Laughter). She's like, we said we were going to leave right away.
Cheryl Lesnick, if you could come forward, but don't leave, Cheryl. Cheryl has 21 years of service, serving as a grade-two teacher at the Shawshin School. Laura Hilliard. Laura has been with us for 18 years as a nurse at the Boutwell School. Jane Ferrera. Jane also has 18 years of service as a nurse, serving at the North Intermediate School. Michelle Imalakis, 22 years of service, serving also as a nurse. Our nursing staff is really going to be turning over at the Wildwood School. Christine McMiniman. Christine is wrapping up 15 years of service here in Wilmington, most recently at the principal at the North Intermediate School. Linda Peters. Ms. Peters makes up for almost 50 percent, no, not 50 percent of the years of service.[222.12][222.12](Laughter). Forty-eight years of service, 48, yes, 48 years of service as principal at the Wilmington High School. Additional folks unable to attend this evening, but we want to take this opportunity to thank them as well. Darlene Sinopoli, 20 years of service, serving in the Food Services Department here in Wilmington. Sharon Enos, 22 years of service, also in the Food Services at the Woburn Street. Patricia Elosi, 20 years of service with the Food Services Department at the North. And bear with me, Patricia Jeanette, 20 years of service as an educational assistant at the Boutwell School. Again, please join me in welcoming and sort of thanking and certainly welcoming these folks to retirement, but of course, for their years of service, for all of our families, all of our students and our staff here in Wilmington. We will miss your service. Thank you so much. I should add, if I may, one, forgive me for not mentioning Lynn Morrison. Lynn was not able to be here this evening. Lynn is retiring after 39 years of service here in Wilmington, serving in accounts payable at Central Office most recently, and we thank Lynn for her service as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item of business is public comment. Mr. Rexton?
So we have three signed up for public comment tonight. First is Jane Woods.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for your time and allowing me...
Address for the record, please.
I'm sorry?
Can you state your name and address?
Oh, yes, Jane Woods. I was going to do that in my speech.[363.22][363.22](Laughter). I was getting to that, David.[365.62][365.62](Laughter).
Jump ahead.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for your time and allowing me to speak about something that's near and dear to my heart, already emotional. My name is Jane Woods. I'm a 19-year veteran ed assistant. When I was thinking about this evening and what I would say to you, I thought about my personal story. Then I thought about all the stories and the struggles that we, the Educational Assistance of Wilmington, have to tell. Well, we all know that telling those stories would take up hours of our time, and we know that our time is valued. Some of the struggles that an ed assistant in Wilmington face are having too little money to pay mounting bills, having too little money to give ourselves and our families a livable life that mirrors others, having too little money to financially and psychologically cope with a child's cancer diagnosis, having too little money to buy nutritious groceries, having too little money to stay warm at night, and on and on it goes. The expression, "Don't judge a book by its cover," rings true in our case. Just because a person drives a nicer car or dresses attractively doesn't mean they are doing well. Skyrocketing debt in order to live a lower to moderate lifestyle while dedicating our lives to the students in Wilmington is indeed our story. I would be willing to make a wager that this school committee does not realize how many members hold degrees of varying disciplines that directly benefit the students of Wilmington. These degrees are recognized with small stipends if applicable, but no acknowledged for the bigger part of who we are, of who we are and the talent we have collectively, but are not compensated with a living wage. I speak to you tonight with the hope that you will recognize our continued hard work and our dedication to the students of Wilmington by settling our living wage contract proposed by the Educational Assistance of the Wilmington Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Katie Callahan.
I was wearing my readers, and then I found I were on TV, and I don't know if I want to put my readers on, but...[514.41][514.41](Laughter). Hi, I'm Katie Callahan, and I live at 27 Dayton Drive. I'm a little nervous right now. I have a tendency to talk fast, which is probably good for the three minutes, and I talk a lot, so my husband's like, whoa, hold on. So here we go. A little background for me. I grew up in Wilmington. I'm the oldest of four. In fact, Ms. Peters was the math teacher when I was in Wilmington, but I was never good at math to have her as a teacher.[539.41][539.41](Laughter). So K to 12 Wilmington Public Schools educated. My mother still lives in the house I grew up in. Out of three brothers, two brothers with their families in Wilmington. I married my high school sweetheart from Wilmington. We live in the house he grew up in, so I'm right behind the Woburn Street School. Three children, all go in Wilmington Public Schools. Well, two have graduated. I went to school to be a teacher, so graduated from assumption, got my degree, got my license, just loved Wilmington, came back to Wilmington, was a tutor for three years, left, went to a different district, had my own classroom for two years, had my children, stayed home, and wanted to get back into it all, but just, you know, God love the teachers. I just felt as though, like, just with my kids, just, it's either all, nothing for me. When I'm in the school, I am there. I am 100%. And when I'm home, I'm 100% with my family. So I just, I wanted to be the educational assistant. I sought that out. I love my job. I, so I'm not there teaching math all the time, but I am in, walking around, and so I noticed little, like, you know, Joey, I didn't mean to use that name, it's not really Joey, but I noticed somebody who's not really paying attention. I go over there, it's like, with like the eyes behind the scenes, helping kids in crisis. So not only that, sorry, I'm getting a little off track, but like my job, the way I look at what I'm doing right now is I go to work and I just want to make the world, or that day, happier for every single little child that I come across. And I do that. I try my best to do that. So I'm, well, thank you. So as I'm talking about my own personal background, talking about the Wilmington Educational Assistance as a unit, they're just amazing. They are like the wind beneath the wings. Now I'm going to use my glasses (laugh) because I'm going off track. We all come from different backgrounds, different experiences, but the one thing we have in common is our love for the kids. We did not get into this for the money, obviously. We put the kids first. That is our main priority, and I feel as though we do a good job at it. We wear many hats, so not only are we doing the daily routines for the classroom, but we're covering for a teacher when the teacher's testing, there's lots of testing going on, or when the teacher's absent, we take over. We go help in another classroom, we're called to help in another classroom. We're called to drive across town and help in another school. All this, fine, I'm not complaining, it's just showing you all that we do. And we gladly do it because once again, we are here for the kids. I taught music for a few weeks, just using my music theater background, it was so much fun, and another friend of ours was always the go-to for gym when we were at the Wildwood. And then the fall of 2020, which was a very hard time, the teachers were called for remote, and got a call on Saturday night of Labor Day weekend, so all of us at varying places to, they took all the educational assistants, and once again, we did it for the kids and put us into the high school to work with the high-needs kids. A lot of us were out of our element, working with children that we haven't necessarily worked with before, but we did it. It was a trying time. We all reached for each other, but once again, we were there, we stepped up, they needed us, you all needed us, and we came. Not you, but you know what I mean. We were there. And, you know, at times, I'm not going to lie, we felt as though there was a little bit of not much support or recognition during that time, here and there. But again, we continued to do what we're asked, and then just even this morning, I'm sorry to get into that, but even just this morning, I found out now my particular classroom with my awesome teacher, who includes me in everything, we're now moving to the West. So here, I'm packing up from the Wildwood to the Woburn Street to the West again. But again, we're doing it for the kids, and we're doing what's best for our school system. It's hard to come up here, and I feel as though I'm trying to defend our worth to you or to people in general, and that's very like, not to grading, but it's like, I just know where I want to be. And to defend or to convince of our worth. And then also too, it was embarrassing to let the public know how little we do make. But I know I'd be disappointed in myself if I didn't come up here, so here I am.
I'm going to ask you to try and wrap up your comment just because...
Except, here, my last sentence. The educational assistants are very valuable, and we just hope that you can see that and that we all deserve better. So thank you very much.
Next, we have Kalana Carroll. Girl, I apologize if I mispronounced it.
Well, that was a lot to follow up. You're amazing. I'm Kalana Carroll. I work at the West. A little background, I've only lived in Massachusetts for five years. I'm originally from Hawaii, but spent many of my years traveling with the military from base to base, settled in Massachusetts, fell in love with Massachusetts. When I transitioned out of the DOD, I came, this was my first job. So I've been an EA with Wilmington for the last four years, and I want you to know how much I love my job. I love my students, and the staff here in Wilmington have been amazing to me as the girl from Hawaii who doesn't really have family here. I'm a single mother of two, a part-time college student, and it's vital for me to earn a living wage. Just like the students that I work with deserve a proper education, and I work really hard every day to give that to them. I want you to know that since April, I have turned down 16 jobs with districts from Drakeet, Lowell, and Billerica, from collaboratives, from home services providers, because I work in ABA. I work with autistic children. Over the last two years, I've been a long-term sub in classrooms where teachers have left, and I decided in April I would not abandon these kids. They lost teachers and EAs who simply just don't come back. I have chosen to finish this year with them, to work this summer, because I care about them and I care about the people that are here. I get regular emails from my parents thanking me for staying, asking me to move up to the middle school with their kids, or just asking if I was going to come back, and I have simply had to say, "I just don't know." And it breaks my heart. Most of the EAs in my building found out I was coming to talk to you, and they have told me, "Kalana, I'm on Mass Health. Kalana, I receive food stamps." And I was shocked that they still show up every single day. They provide toys for the children, puzzles, prizes, and they're on food stamps. Through all the chaos, we show up and we ask you to show up for us too, when we are in need. Our population of special learners are growing every single year, and they deserve stability and consistency, and you have the opportunity to give that to them by supporting us who show up every single day and love our kids. Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who would like to make a public comment? Mr. Cohen, please come forward.
Good evening. Jeffrey Cohen, 18 Cobalt Street in Wilmington. I know most of you were probably hoping I wasn't going to show up today because I failed to submit a comment in advance, but oh, well. Why is it necessary for this committee to be reminded by a concerned citizen that according to the District Safety Commissioner, there has been no safety committee meeting for the last two years? It was only after that reminder that a meeting was scheduled. Especially considering recent events, I find that completely inexcusable. When a meeting was finally scheduled, none of the stakeholders, staff, and teachers were invited. Why was this decision made? Who is responsible for this utter failure? Wilmington Schools has a budget of $49 million and has received numerous grants from federal and state government, so there is money, excuse me, funding available. So why then are there no first aid kits available in classrooms? Why was the request from office staff and teachers to lock the inter vestibule doors denied? Why are teacher requests to repair broken locks consistently denied? Why have classroom door barricades been repeatedly denied? This committee has been wasting all their time on indoctrinating students in gender ideology, social and emotional learning, and so-called diversity equity and inclusion, and have drifted far away from educating students. I strongly urge this committee to return exclusively to educating students of the core subjects and eliminate all other distractions. That's what most Wilmington residents want. Thank you.
I saw someone here, please come forward.
Good evening. I'm Brianna Locke, 5 Coolidge Road. Right now, I have in front of me a 900-people signature petition on Action Network telling you, everyone, about the Wilmington ed assistance deserving a living wage. We, the undersigned, want to thank this, thank those who, thank those of you who, of school committee who supported this passage of the Student Opportunity Act, advocating for Wilmington to receive millions more in state funding for public education. We urge you to support the Fair Share Amendment as well, which would bring millions more in state education funding in our schools. We have a lot of work to do in Wilmington, and one of the most important places we can invest these funds is the people serving our students and in the community, especially us as educational assistants. As you are aware, educational assistants in Wilmington are in the process of negotiating a new contract. As Wilmington community members and supporters, we are fully support EAs receiving a livable wage, more opportunities for professional development and growth, and to be treated as the educational professionals they are. EAs are working with students who require extra care and specialized instruction, whether it is students just entering the school in pre-K and kindergarten to students at any grade level needing support to meet the goals of their individual education plans. Educational assistants play an important role in keeping our students safe, providing small and large group instruction, and helping students regain self-control and creating environments where all students can learn. EAs keep our schools running smoothly. With the shortage of substitute teachers, EAs are often required to cover teachers who are absent or need to attend vital meetings. We applaud the school committee's current approach in looking at issues at our schools with the focus of equity and educational justice. We hope that this issue will also be looked at with the same intensity and viewpoint. An EA's current salary of $16,118 to $27,769 is simply not enough to live on. It's shocking to find out exactly what these hard-working professionals are paid. As community members and supporters, we ask that every effort be made to create a contract that reflects the values of EAs provide with respectable wages at least $30,000 a year, more stability at work, and more professional opportunities for the growth. As a leader for Wilmington, we, the undersigned, ask that you do all that you can to support our EAs in securing a livable, a living wage, better professional development and opportunities, and respect and deserve. I currently have 900 signatures for you. Can I bring that up? Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment? All right, public comment.
All right, thank you. Our next item of business is approval of items by consensus. We have approval of minutes, May 25, 2022. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns, second. Thank you, Mrs. Plowman, all in favor. It's unanimous. We have approval of handbook Wilmington High School. This is the second reading. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns, second. Thank you, Mrs. Plowman, all in favor. That is unanimous. Thank you. We have an approval of a field trip. I think there's a presentation, so I'm actually going to, we're going to, hold on, come on up. We'll just go right in order. Come on up. This is approval of a field trip to Peru. We are very excited about this presentation, and with us, we have Megan Burns and Julie Kim.
We also have Madison Benoit. She's a student who's signed up on the field trip. She's, she's one of my Spanish III students, so...
Thanks for being here, Madison.
Thank you so much for having us tonight. We're excited to present this field trip and so thrilled to offer this opportunity to the students of Wilmington High School. So this field trip is to see Peru. We're going to visit Machu Picchu, and it's over February vacation in 2024, so the students will not be missing any school. I have students who were concerned about AP classes, they're signed up for five APs their senior year, they will not be missing any school for this trip. So we will be heading to Peru and South America on the Pacific coast. Just a little bit about myself, I teach Spanish III and IV. I've been teaching in Wilmington for 14 years, 18-year teacher overall, and I have a lot of wonderful students this year who are excited to come on this trip. And this is Julie Kim.
Hola. I also speak.[1508.32][1508.32](Laughter). Yo puedo hablar español también. But I'm actually a chemistry teacher, and I'm the head of science, and should I tell them? Initially, this was a Galapagos, Machu Picchu trip. However, it's turned into Machu Picchu, and so I still want to go. So this is my sixth year in Wilmington, 22 years in teaching, and I love science. And the cool thing is Peru is in South America, it's in the Andes, and it is so diverse, and I actually studied abroad. I never had a chance in high school, and so I think it's awesome that we allow kids that are younger to go. And it wasn't until I studied abroad in Spain when I was in sophomore at BU over the summer that I just loved the language, and I just want to be a poster child of you can do science in Spanish. It's possible. You can double major. I am a living proof, right? And it's not until they actually experience the culture and practice their language that they really can just fall in love with it. And we can do a ton of gas law experiments on the top (Laughter) of the mountains, of course, because I have to bring some chemistry into it, right? So this is just a few pictures of the amazing sites and ruins that we'll be able to visit, and the history is just magnificent. Megan's going to talk about some of the trip details.
Yes. So, yes, so this trip, the cost is including the airfare to and from Lima, that's from Boston, and we also have another flight that the students will be taking from Lima to Cusco, so that'll bring us to the Andes, and from there, we take a train, so that is also included in the, in the cost. For the first day, we'll arrive in Lima, we'll do some sightseeing, and this is all with a tour guide who's Spanish-speaking from Explorica, the company that we're using. We'll visit a museum, which is a museum of anthropology and archaeology, so we'll see some Incan artifacts there. Next, we fly to Cusco, which is a smaller city way up in the Andes, and we get a guided tour of that. We'll see some fortresses while we're there, different sites, and as well as an Indian market, and from there, we will head to Machu Picchu. So the train that we'll take has windows at the top, we'll be able to see some of the mountains there. We'll be doing a hike to get a beautiful view of Machu Picchu, and that's the view that the students will see on day six. We get some time to explore. We also will do some river rafting as well into the jungle, and we'll head home the following day. Okay? And just a little bit about the, the cost. We have a monthly payment plan for students. It's $50 to sign up. We tried to make this affordable. As Mrs. Kim mentioned, I wanted to do the Galapagos Islands as well, but I really cut it back a bit just for the sheer cost factor, and I didn't want to overwhelm ourselves on our first trip to South America, so we're keeping it small this time, but again, this is a great opportunity for students. There is also financial assistance available if anyone does need it, and we have good trip insurance. We'll offer some fundraising opportunities if the students and families do need that as well.
Yeah. There's also travel insurance, travel protection, and because it's still almost two years out, there's a significant amount of time for families to plan and to budget this in as an amazing educational experience, right? I want to be part of student, yeah. You can speak.
I definitely speak for all the students who are looking at going or already signed up when I say, "This is never an opportunity that I'm going to have again. I'm never going to be able to just go to Machu Picchu or Peru at all for nine days with a bunch of my friends." So I really, I mean, I'd like to go, obviously. It's a great opportunity, and it'll be a good chance to use the Spanish I've been working on in class.
Yes, she's doing a great job. Thank you.
We'll see. See you on the final.[1770.88][1770.88](Laughter).
And she's a wonderful student, so thank you, Maddie. My parents are here, so thank you for that.
All right. So in comedy, if Spanish fails, so...[1784.75][1784.75](Laughter).
Do you have any questions for us?
Thank you so much. Any questions about the trip?
I'm just jealous. Beyond, beyond jealous. It's, it's one of the, not the... Beyond, beyond jealous, it's, it's, it's one of the, it's not the, it's one of the wonders of the world, but it's just, it's an incredible place, and for the opportunity for, um, the school to take on a trip of this nature, I think in my twelve years, I don't think they've ever gotten beyond Costa Rica, if I'm correct. So this is a whole new adventure, and I'm, I'm so very excited, um, for, I know I'm absolutely in, in, in on this with, giving you, giving you the opportunity to share that with our students and staff and chaperones if you need it.
Hablas, hablas español?
Not at all. I don't even speak Portuguese.
So no, no Quechua? No Quechua or anything? That's the native language?
Google translator.
Oh, boy.
Thank you for your support. We appreciate it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Any other questions? Mr. Smaha?
I have a question. I think it sounds fantastic. I, I also like this, like, combining of, like, language and science together. Um, I think that's a really interesting way to do it, and it's gonna be, like, summer there in February, right?
Yes, yes. Yes, it'll be warm in Lima, a little cooler in the mountains, but yes.
That might be a little motivation of why we want to go in February. Don't tell the students that we're doing chemistry experiments, though. Yeah.
Just bring that on them after they're signed up.
Mrs. Plowman?
Um, I was just curious, I, I don't know much about other trips that you've taken students on. Have we used Explorica before?
Yes.
You're familiar with them?
Yes, the trip that was run by, uh, I believe it was Ms. Fidler and Ms. Desburg and Mrs. Tucker, um, as well as Mrs. Feliz, they went to, uh, Europe, they did a Greece trip, um, in Italy, and they used Explorica.
Okay.
Yes. So, yeah, they're a reputable company, and I also have, um, a student who is traveling to Puerto Rico this summer. He won a travel scholarship, and Explorica is the company that they use as well. So, yes, they're very well-known and reputable.
Any other questions or comments? I think my daughter may have messaged me pretty immediately when she heard about this, and I said, I'm not even sure we've seen this at the school committee yet, so she's very, very excited, I'm sure along with you, Maddie, so.
We've already talked about Birmingham, so.
Yeah. No, we're very supportive of it, and I just want to thank you for taking the time to organize and, and do something like this for, for the children, because this is just a huge undertaking, and we really, we deeply appreciate it, and I know, you make it all sound like it's all fun and beautiful, and that's, it is fun and beautiful, but it's a lot of responsibility, so we do appreciate and feel so comfortable that you.
Yeah, and we're parents also, so there'll be room checks. We have, like, one ear to the door, don't worry. We're moms, we don't really sleep at night.
That's right.
Thank you, and like Mr. Smaha, I love the, um, inter, the integration of the science and I think that's just fantastic, so, thank you.
Thank you for the support.
Um, I'd just like to also say, you know, to thank you for the financial considerations and for thinking about, like, how to make this opportunity as available to as many students as possible. Uh, I mean, there, there's no getting around that it's an expensive trip, but it, you know, it can't be otherwise, but by both from the timeline and the plans and the, you know, the being able to spread out the time and give people, um, enough, you know, opportunity to possibly make some arrangements and save and so forth and financially, uh, I think that that's really important, that we make these types of opportunities as available as they can be to, uh, to all of our students, and so thank you for, for making that an important consideration.
Thank you.
Yes, when I was in high school, there was a school trip going to Barcelona and Paris, and, you know, we just didn't have enough money. There were only a few months, you know, to plan for it, and I wasn't able to go, so luckily I did get the opportunity in college to study, study abroad in Spain, but, um, I think this is a great chance for, for students and not one that will come up very often.
Thank you very much. All right, there's nothing further, is there a motion? Mr. Fenely?
I would move to accept this proposal.
Is there a second? Mr. Smaha, all in favor? That is unanimous. Have fun.
Thank you so much. Thanks, everyone, thank you.
Okay, it's two years out, you still have time to learn enough.
Yeah.
Duolingo.
Duolingo.
Rosetta Stone, is that it?
Back to it, or do you have it ready? You do, okay. Great. Uh, next item, we have acceptance of the two thousand and twenty-two WEF technology grants. Um, we'll take the motions and vote, and then Mr. Ragsdale will read through them for us. Is there a motion?
The move.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns, is there a second? Mr. Ragsdale, all in favor? That is unanimous. You know, you read through those for us.
Uh, sure, so there's, uh, quite a number of these. Nine hundred and seventy dollars for squishy circuits, um, for Kim Provinsal, the technology integration specialist for K-5. Uh, hundred and sixty dollars for writing and grammar support with quill.org, that's DeSue McDonald, um, ESL, uh, CTL. Uh, seven hundred ninety-nine dollars for U-Lift-Up E, uh, U-Lift-Up E-Wall, that's for, uh, Dr. Quirk, uh, at the middle school. Uh, nine hundred sixty-five dollars for SparkView license, pH sensors, and spec, and a spectrometer for Jeremy Salerno, science teacher at the high school. Two hundred ninety-nine dollars, uh, for everyday speech, uh, for Suzanne Crowell, a speech-language pathologist at the West and the Middle School. Uh, one thousand two hundred forty-nine dollars for VEX Go Classroom Bundle. I'm curious what that is. Uh, that's for Michelle Levecq, our K-5 STEM coordinator. Uh, one hundred thirty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents, uh, for annual memberships to ultimate SLP dot com, uh, for Lauren Bissette, a speech-language pathologist at the North. Seven hundred eighty-eight dollars for iPad integration, that's, uh, for Jennifer Hanifin, Stepping Stones classroom teacher at the West and the Middle School. Four hundred thirty-two dollars and twenty cents, uh, for iPads in the music room, um, to Robin Barry, music teacher at the West and Batwell. Three hundred ninety-nine dollars for MetaQuest VR headset, uh, to Diana Hill, post-grad sped teacher at the high school, and thirty-nine dollars for moat to Brenda Lamano, teacher at the middle school and a district tech trainer. And we thank WEF so much, uh, for their support, um, and also the teachers for doing the work in the first place, uh, to request these grants and, uh, and all the research.
Thank you.
Yeah, Chris, Christine.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, just wanted to mention the VEX are robotics, um, kits for student use, so that's part of the, um, uh, grant that, um, Michelle has written around our STEM coordinator to bring in different opportunities for classrooms at the elementary level to build opportunities for robotics and, um, some tinkering going on in classrooms.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Who was the second on the motion for this? Was it me?
It was you.
I knew I seconded something.
We have warrants, um, CPO one, G forty-one, R forty-two, forty-three, L ninety-six, ninety-seven, and FS sixty-seven, sixty-eight, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, and seventy-three. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, a second? Mr. Turner, all in favor? That is unanimous. We have warrant CB O six, is there a motion? Thank you, Mr. Fenely, second by Mrs. Plowman, all in favor? One abstention. payroll ending six, eight, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion? Mrs. Burns, second by Mr. Smaha, all in favor? That's unanimous. We have sped thirty-nine, forty. Mrs. Plowman, thank you, second by Mr. Turner, all in favor? And one abstention. Great. All right, that brings us to our superintendent's report. Dr. Brand.
Thank you very much. Uh, good evening, everyone. There are three items that are listed, uh, tonight, and I'll go in order. First off, celebrating the good, um, as we continue to try, uh, our very best to make sure that our community knows about the many wonderful things that are taking place through our, throughout our district and our, our schools and our programs. Uh, two things to draw your attention to, the first, um, in the packet, um, a shout-out goes to Teresa Pietro, a world-language teacher, uh, here at the Wilmington High School, night of world language for sure. Um, as you'll note, uh, in, um, in the communication that was put together, she is actually, as we speak, in Toronto, uh, traveling both to Toronto and Quebec City, uh, over the course of the coming days to complete the Fulbright Teachers for Global Classrooms International Field Experience. Uh, this program is an opportunity for teachers to experience, um, both culture, but more importantly, educational systems in other countries, and so Teresa's off to Canada to explore further those school systems there. She has served in Wilmington since two thousand and fourteen, and, uh, this is a terrific honor, this program, if you're not maybe that familiar with it. She is, as I understand it, one of seventy-one participant, participants who will travel, uh, with this program throughout, uh, the country, so congratulations to Teresa, um, a terrific honor for her, and also, uh, obviously, uh, look forward to hearing more about her experiences when she returns. Um, the other item, uh, but celebrating the good, it has been, um, socialized, I think, previously, but you'll find in the packet, uh, the, uh, the information as it relates to, let's go back to that, um, the many, many, uh, scho, schools and universities in which our, uh, students are heading off to. Um, we, we did, uh, with Ms. Ingersoll's help, try and push this out to the community, but uh, fitting as it is, is that we just, uh, said goodbye to the class of two thousand and twenty-two, and we wanted to draw attention to, uh, to where they are headed, uh, many of the highlights there. You'll see on the flyer, there's, um, the shout-out for some of, uh, our future collegiate athletes. We have a number of students from the high school going on to continue, uh, their sports pursuits, uh, in college, post-secondary education. We had seven stu, we have seven students from the class of two thousand and twenty-two heading on to Division One sports. Uh, we have two students heading on to Division Two, and four students heading on to Division Three sports, uh, and so, uh, great kudos for our athletic program here, the community programs that obviously collectively help build these, uh, these, uh, student athletes and prepare them for, uh, what lies ahead. Also in that flyer, um, is, uh, the note of the many, many, uh, universities and colleges that our two thousand and twenty-two grads are going to be entering. Uh, our graduates were accepted to a hundred and seventy-three schools, and they, uh, the plans are to attend seventy-three of those, and you can see on that flyer, uh, the listing of those there. Um, the second item, I'll, uh, turn over to, uh, to Paul around the FY twenty-two end of the year report.
Uh, thank you. In your package, it's actually the FY twenty-one end-of-the-year report, I'll call it audit. Um, as you know, every year, um, school districts have to supply the, uh, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education report of every penny that comes in and goes out of the district. After we, so, um, submit that report, uh, audit firms come out and just make sure we, we, uh, follow the proper procedures and so forth, so in front of you, you have the audit report as you receive every, every year. Um, two findings this year, one finding was, uh, the town received a small amount of grant funds related to the school, uh, to schools, and I think it was more for probably, um, some cleaning products and so forth for, um, public buildings, and some of those costs get allocated back to the schools. Uh, we were never notified of that, so it wasn't in our initial submission, and we just made amendments, so that was fine. And the second finding is the one we've had for a few years where, uh, we've been using the same process for the town to allocate costs back to the schools for the end-of-the-year report. Uh, we just don't have a formal signed-off document yet with everything going on, so it is on our list to do. Um, the town accountant, uh, finance director and, and I have spoken about that, so we'll shoot to get something in place soon, but it's the same process has been used well before I was here, so, uh, and the audit is a fine with it, it just wanted something written down.
Uh, moving on, um, thanks, Paul, to the third item. Uh, in your packet, uh, there is a copy of, uh, a memo, uh, regarding a joint town meeting on school safety. Um, it's, uh, it is certainly not lost upon, I think, any of us that, um, we are as a country still reeling from the tragic, uh, and most recent school shooting in Texas, and, um, I know that I have received, as I'm sure many in our community have received, uh, questions from our community members around what exactly, what steps we are taking to move forward with in, in regards to school safety and public building safety, um, and so it, um, it seems to me only appropriate that we engage in these conversations with our other community leaders and partners. Uh, so much of this decision-making, uh, clearly is squarely centered on, uh, the schools and, uh, my leadership team and myself as your superintendent, but obviously, uh, warrants, um, conversation with others in town, including police, uh, fire, um, our town leadership, and so, um, that is one of many next steps that, um, I right now envision in terms of our, uh, pursuit forward to trying to ensure that our schools are, uh, as safe as they can be, our staff are as prepared as they can be, uh, to help, uh, take the prudent steps to do the best that we can to ensure student, um, and staff safety. So I provide that there for your reference, and I'm happy to take questions if you have on any of those items tonight, but, uh, that is it for my report this evening.
Mrs. Burns?
Um, has the first meeting been scheduled?
It has not, we, uh, we have the plans for, oh, sorry, it has been scheduled, it's not taken place, I'm sorry, it's scheduled for next week.
Next week.
My apologies.
Um, I, I would like to be in attendance, and, and I, and I asked to do so, as an observer, I, I would defer to the chair and vice chair, um, to take the active role, but I, I would like to be at least a part of the conversation. Um, and I've reached out to Superintendent Brand earlier, earlier in my tenure on this board, after the Newtown, um, and Virginia Tech shootings, um, I, I've written, not with, you know, hope that some of it stuck, um, for state legislators and our federal legislators, um, with regards to school safety, not so much about getting into the discussion of gun control or that aspect, but more so in keeping our schools safe, which is, I think, in line with, um, I think with what Dr. Brand is, uh, is hoping to gather with our town leaders, and to ensure that, um, our schools remain institutions of learning and not prisons, for lack of a better term. Um, but, um, I, I would, I would ask that, um, if I could, um, attend that meeting, if it's not a, uh, already a public, um, meeting.
So, I mean, uh, I just received the invite, I think it is June sixteenth at eleven AM, eleven to twelve, and we can certainly, I would imagine, send that out so that people can attend as observers.
Thank you. Is that, um, here at the high school or somewhere else?
At the Roman House.
Thank you.
At the Roman House.
Thank you.
Is it, is it a public meeting, or is it?
We don't have plans to.
You don't have plans for it to be, okay.
It's not a, it's not a board, uh, so I.
Okay, I just, just she, she mentioned that, so I didn't, I just wanted to clarify.
It's only, it's, it was, I think, maybe a little, um, because it's, it's titled as a joint town meeting, so then I think that's where the clarity comes in.
I, I think, I think it's important, because if, if people are watching or people are, um, found out about this, they might be interested, so I, I, it's good to have clarity on what type of meeting that it is. Just maybe add a, you know, the intention here, my, my intention with this messaging was to try and convey. Um, it, it, it's clear to me that this is a topic on many people's minds. It's clear to me that we need to engage in conversation with others, and certainly, uh, it's not just the schools, uh, themselves, um, and, and my effort was to try and, and let the community know that I recognize this, committed to bringing together our community partners to have this conversation. By no means do I think that one meeting alone is going to address all this, and that's the first point, and the second point is, I would fully imagine that whatever comes out of these discussions will have to be, um, carefully and thoughtfully socialized with our community. Um, so in no way is this going to be, and I wouldn't want members, you know, watching to think that this is a closed-door meeting with decisions that won't be, uh, become known in the community. This is, uh, maybe the, the title was wrong or off-base, but, um, again, my effort was to try and convey that, um, we, we, we need to collectively step up and, and have some of these conversations with our, our town leaders.
Can I ask you, I'm sorry, and not to overstep, just a very quick question. I know that, and maybe Paul can, um, speak to it, there was a group formed, uh, I want to say that John Betton may have created a, a task force, a security task force, uh, emergency, uh, task force with, um, the police chief at the time, um, the fire chief, the town manager, I, I, wasn't there a working committee at some point?
Well, there's, there's a couple of things. One, we have a district safety committee that's made up of, um, members of the school department, you know, nurses, administrative assistants, educational assistants, teachers, administrators, and included in that committee typically was members of the police and members of the fire department, and it was a working group that, um, would get together, we'd meet, and that's what, uh, the superintendent, we're reinstituting that with COVID and everything, it kind of fell through the crack, not through the cracks, but we just haven't got that, so we've had that program. A long time ago, the town, if, if this is what you're alluding to, did a tabletop exercise, and it was around a hurricane, I think, and that had, I think, the fire chief probably along with the town manager and, and the police chief kind of started that process, and we, we had, I think they had a consultant, this is going back quite a few years, and it was more for, um, a incident in Wilmington or an incident that impacts Wilmington, so it could have been a, um, a, a trailer with, or tractor, whatever, trailer with oil that spills on ninety-three that impacts, you know, a whole bunch of different things, so it was kind of there, and, uh, but that was a long, long time ago, if that's what you're talking about.
I, I, I'm trying to, trying to recall, so is, is that, is that what, is this two separate entities with what you're trying to do, Dr. Brain, and the task force that was created previously, is that, or is that one in the same, it's just, um, you just used a different title? Is that, or is that one in the same, it's just, you just use a different title? I just, I'm just trying to get clarity.
I'm not sure that they're necessarily the same.
Okay.
I mean, not to say that there's not overlap, but you know, what happens in these circumstances, and I've found this before, this is not new per se in the wake of Texas, but of the Texas shooting, but you know, there are members of our community that are looking for clarity around our approach to the utilization of these buildings 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And the reality is, the school department doesn't oversee the operations of the schools 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And, and so that, to me, is the essence of sort of this beginning conversation. How are we going to approach the safety and security? There are plans in place from a safety planning standpoint in schools, district plans in place, and those conversations will always be situated within our schools. But in particular, in the wake of the Texas, I've said, the Texas, this Texas tragedy, there, I know it's on, I know because I've received the messages on people's minds around what are we doing as a whole. And as I've said, this clearly has an intersection with our police and town leaders as well, too.
Thank you. Mr. Rexton?
I just want to emphasize as well that this is just, you know, the first conversation, that we're, you know, no, no changes are, you know, certainly no, you know, large changes are going to be instituted without gathering feedback from our families and our staff. So this is, you know, it's not, this is not a meeting open to the public, but there will be plenty of public discussion and transparency about any, you know, changes, if there are some, or just the larger discussion. So this is really just the very first thing that's happening.
Thanks, David. Mrs. Plowman?
I know that in addition to pulling together this joint meeting, some other steps have been taken of late as well. And one of those things was the checking of all the doors, the locking, the locking capability of each classroom. And I know that you had, with Mr. Hooper's support and involvement, initiated procedures and process for ensuring that. Have you received any updates from Mr. Hooper on the status and where that process is right?
Not at this moment, but I know that data has been collected. It was, so I don't know where he's at with that, but that data and those audits, if you will, have, should have been completed at this point in time. And I know we have Mr. Hooper's partnership and his staff to attend those, certainly. So I'll be able to report out more about that, maybe not by the 22nd meeting, but certainly in the near future.
Thank you.
I just want to make a couple of clarifications. So George Hooper's not on this list, however, he has been invited.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
The other, I've just gotten a couple of questions about bullet number two. Should we keep doors locked at all times whenever our community, schools have children in them? And my understanding has always been that during the school day, those doors are always locked. So I'm assuming this is more about sort of evening, the way the buildings are used after school hours, but it does say during school here. So I just wanted to assure the community that the doors are locked during the day. I've answered quite a few emails about that this week.
Yes, so, yes, the doors are locked in all of our buildings while school's in session. The questions that I've been fielding have been more about, well, why shouldn't, should we not keep the doors locked at all times? And should we not be carefully monitoring, having actually personnel monitoring people when they come into the schools at all times? And, and we don't approach, we don't approach that right now in that way. Examples have included, well, for, for the choral concert or the play, shouldn't we do that all the, you know, and that includes, you know, parks and rec programs. Our buildings are obviously used greatly by parks and rec programs, and I've received some of those questions around that. And so that gets in again to, you know, time period and use of our schools that extends well beyond what we can staff and what we can support. But through the school day, they're locked at all times.
Thank you. And I think there's probably some inconsistency, because there have been some events where I've had to submit my name ahead of time so that they know I'm coming.
Right.
And then there are probably those concerts where it's a little bit more of a, you're assuming people coming in are all for that, right? So I think we should probably need to tighten that up.
All right, so more to come, more to come on this. Thank you for including it.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is social studies curriculum adoption. We have a presentation, and Mr. Moriello is here, patiently waiting.
The last man standing in the audience.
This was an easy one, though. Thank you for being here, Bob, we really appreciate it.
Happy to be here.
We are actually very excited to be here presenting this, because I know this has been a long time coming and just to get us launched. So Bob has taken on the role this year as our social studies lead teacher for the elementary schools. And thank goodness for Bob this year, he's been a huge asset to really, he basically has taken this whole curriculum adoption piece and, and he's just run with it this year and done a fantastic job. So very excited to have him taking the lead on this initiative. The, in 2018, Massachusetts Frameworks for Social Studies were updated. As you know, we have gone, been working on updating our six to 12 programs and curriculum apps and all of that. So that is, we're finalizing that this year. When I came on board, there was lots of notes left behind and budget plans and things to make this transition at the elementary level. So I know that Dr. Reagan had plans to move this forward, and then he, with his departure, then came COVID. So all of these plans have been sort of in limbo. So this year, we really tried to fast-track this process, knowing that we really needed to make this switch. We started by, well, first, let me thank the committee. I want to publicly thank the committee for the work that they have done. So we had at grade one, Bridget Lipsky and Erin Cowden. We had grade two, Noel Calley and Sacha Cody. Grade three, Annette Owen, Diane Flaherty. Grade four, Kristin Russo, Nicole Hojali and Renee DeShane. And then grade five, Anne DePanfylis and Catherine Maella. So they were a fantastic group to work with, always going above and beyond, coming to all the meetings and then doing all the research beyond our meetings. So it was great working with all of these teachers. In the fall, this past year, we started, thank you, we started by really doing a deep dive into the frameworks, making sure all educators on this committee had a really deep understanding of what it is that we were needing to teach our students, to make sure that we would be selecting programs that would really be a good match and a fit for what it is that we are tasked with teaching, based on our frameworks. So we have, we started with a list of what do you like about what we currently have and teachers, that was a very short meeting, because they're like, well, we don't have much and we don't have a lot in common. We did some comparison between both sides of town and what are we doing and what are, you know, what are the resources? So we, you know, we did that quick kind of, what do we want to maintain versus what do we really want in a program? And we spent more time with knowing what we really wanted to move forward with and what we needed. So what were the, the wants and needs of our, of a new social studies program? In the winter, we, so we then identified different programs that we really wanted to investigate further, sort of divided and conquered by grade level, and they dug into some of these programs and materials. Bob set up presentations from the vendors to come in and, well, to virtually do demos of the different programs. So, and then Bob, in his classroom, managed all of the samples for the whole district that arrived, kept arriving. So it's a good thing Bob is very organized and his classroom is very neat and organized and everything had its own spot. But he was able to really manage all of those materials for the teachers and help facilitate them with time to explore through those. Ultimately, after, teachers created rubrics of what were those, with Bob's help with, what is it that we are looking for? We created those checklists, so as they started to vet those programs and dig through the materials, they would provide feedback all, all the way along, checking off the boxes. This program does meet all of these things, this one doesn't. And that's sort of how we moved forward to identify which programs would be piloted. And then in the spring, each of these teachers piloted two different programs. They did at least a full unit in each program to get a sense of what it was like to use the materials. So from my experience in the past, you know, if you are going to pilot a program and you divide, half the teachers do one and the other half do the other program, at the end of the day, the teachers that taught program A love program A, and the teachers that taught program B love program B, because they don't have the context to be able to really speak to which one they felt would be a better fit. So we had them both pilot both programs, units from each of those two programs. And at the end of the day, they, you know, knowing that they're not teaching from the beginning of the end to the end, they, you know, we created what we felt was a reasonable expectations of what they could evaluate based on that, you know, so user, the, how engaged kids were in the material? Was it truly aligned to the standards as it, every publishing program says it is? And, you know, how were the teacher resources? How were the assessments? Could you edit the assessments and make modifications if you need to for particular students? So they looked at all of those different features and, and that's how they ranked whether the program was really appropriate and the best one for us as a district. So that was the process. And Bob is going to talk through the decision and what we picked, and I promise I'll click slides.
Thanks. So ultimately, our recommendation was a unique one. We decided to go with impact social studies for grades one, two, four, and five. And for grade three, Gibbs Smith, Massachusetts, Our Home. And I'll, I'll talk more about why for each one. So for McGraw-Hill, most of these comments came directly from the teachers that had piloted them as we, as we collect through them. It aligns nicely to our Massachusetts history and social science frameworks. The content is very age-appropriate and engaging. The literacy skills are incorporated right in it, so as we're learning about cause and effect, there's, it's embedded right into the program. There are formative and summative assessments within each lesson and unit. There's three, three books that go along with it. There's an inquiry journal, which is consumable. It's, it has reading materials kids can interact with, as well as places to record information, do vocabulary activities. There's an explorer magazine, which features fiction and nonfiction selections that pair with the textbook. And the research companion, which is a traditional textbook-style format with page spread sections of information. And then one of the other bonuses was that this program is used within six through 12. So students can continue with it through six through 12. So the company put this out and it's a really great graphic for what the program entails and based on the letter of, of the name, Inquiry. So each unit is inquiry-based and students explore an essential question. And each chapter has inquiry projects that allow students to collaborate and think critically while taking action. It presents multiple perspectives. Students analyze primary and secondary sources and they see diverse viewpoints. And one of my favorite parts of it is that students have to cite evidence to support their arguments and their opinions. It, for P, it supports a diverse view of people, but it also shows how citizens are active members of the community and helps students imagine their future responsibilities in a community. For accessibility, the A, it's scaffolded and does a great job with language support of academic vocabulary. And like I showed you in the magazine, there's paired, paired text for the content covered. For C, it combines geography, economics, history, and civics, the four areas of social studies. And it helps students develop skills, it helps students develop skills to take responsible, informed action in a community. And the T is the time aspect. There is a tiered, tiered lesson planning to help meet different timeframes, whether we have 15 minutes, a half hour, however much you have.
And if I can just add to that, that feature, most, in most districts, you know, any published program you buy has enough to do 180 days, well, most of them actually are, we are 190 days and we're not sure how we would ever fit those in. But in most elementary districts, teachers do not have access in their schedule to be able to teach social studies every day for, you know, at most elementary grades, they're alternating science and social studies. So this program has already factored that in. Most teachers would normally have to sit down with a curriculum team and decide, how are we going to pace this? What are our priorities? This program gives you different fast-tracks, they call them. So it'll say, if you have, you know, two 45-minute blocks a week, this is what you should prioritize. If you have three 30-minute blocks a week, or whatever it is, they give you a lot of different options. So that was a feature that is really nice that they've done some of that background for us, to make sure that we're still hitting the standards and still focusing on the essential things that we need to.
The other feature I missed in accessibility is it does have a social, emotional learning competencies component, so it addresses a social, emotional competencies built right in the program.
And digital components, too, as well.
So for third grade, our recommendation is Massachusetts, Our Home. In Massachusetts, the third grade standards are the Massachusetts history standards, which going with the national program, they're not going to address Massachusetts history at the third grade level. So it's a challenge to pick a program. Massachusetts, Our Home, it was written specifically, it's a 2020 edition, specifically to address the 2018 changes made to the, to the social science standards. The reading material is very engaging. It's at their, at students' level, they can read it on their own. There is a focus on using primary sources, so each chapter has a primary source connection that asks questions of the primary source to get kids thinking. There's hands-on activities built in and it has some of the assessments that are editable for our use. And then these next few slides talk about what's in each program. And I'll talk really, I'm not going to read through everything, but I'll talk about at each grade level, what this, what the science, social sciences standards address, and you can see how they connect. So in kindergarten, the main focus in social studies is the many roles of living and working together. So how do we act in a, in a classroom? How do we get along? Things like that. In first grade, it gets larger, spreads to the community. So what makes a community member? How do we contribute to a community? And also, things like national holidays are learned in first grade. In second grade, we branch out, there's more of a focus on geography in second grade. You know, what makes countries and looking at the world and continents, how they're broken down into countries. Third grade, obviously, is Massachusetts, focusing on the history of Massachusetts, really up to the Revolutionary War and then how the country was formed, so the Constitution and that whole process. Fourth grade covers North American geography, the history and its people, so the ancient people of North America and the oil explorers, and then the regions of our country. And fifth grade covers US history to the Civil War and how slavery impacted the modern civil rights movement.
So at this point in time, we are asking for your approval of these recommended programs for a full implementation in the fall. We are, we have tentative plans already for professional development and the implementation that we would be launching. The PD would start in the fall, but also then be throughout the course of the year in different intervals for our teachers in grades K to five. In addition, we will keep the social study committee up and running next year for, you know, and give preference, obviously, to those who served this year to continue, because they already have some training in these programs and experience with them. And I would like for them to be able to stay on and meet monthly so that as we are implementing throughout the course of the year, if a team is struggling with some aspect of a program, they bring it to the committee and we make those unified decisions across the district to ensure that the implementation is consistent in, in how we move forward. And, you know, they will help to, that committee would help with, you know, overseeing problems of practice, but also making sure that the pacing is, you know, we'll have a plan in place for pacing, but does that actually work in our classroom with our schedules? Make decisions around what assessments will be administered, knowing that we have a lot of resources in these programs, really trying to fine-tune what it is that we want to prioritize. So, so that is our plan and we are happy to take any questions at this point.
Thank you very much for that work and that presentation. Mrs. Plowman?
I just, I think this is really exciting. You guys must be so excited. I know this has been a long-term goal for the district, so I think it's exciting for the students and the staff who have been needing this for so long. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the presentation, and I really appreciate the way you did it with the comparative aspects. I've heard of a lot of cases where it's, it's try this, do you like it, yes or no? As opposed to having the two different options and coming to a decision that's a positive decision as opposed to just the one-sided decision. And also, the, the idea that it has the pre-pack, pre-suggested tiering is, in terms of the amount of time you have in a day, because it does vary. But it also seems like this will align well with your goals of having the different schools in the different grades kind of moving at the same sort of pace as, pace. So I think this is fantastic and I really appreciate the effort you guys already put into it to get where we are at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Turner, other questions or comments? Mr. Smaha?
Yeah, I mean, I
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I mean, I'll repeat sort of what, what they just said. I really appreciate the process. You know, as a teacher, like, I, I know what it's like when somebody says, here's this new curriculum, and the process that you, that you went through in letting them try it out, not just this group tries it out, then this group tries out the other one, and then you compare, which is how it usually is, like you were saying. So I, I really appreciate that. I think, looking at it with the, the, you know, the flexible pacing, like, is so good. I mean, I'll tell you, I was, last week, I was looking at, actually, the same publisher, but, you know, like, a six-page lesson plan for a 45-minute class, and I was like, you gotta be, you gotta be kidding me. So it's nice to see that there's, there's some flexibility in there. So you can still stick with the curriculum, but you can choose a different, you know, choose a different track if you're finding it's not meeting up with the schedule. So I think that's a really good, a real positive thing, you know, about it. And the only other thing I'll, I'll add, too, is the, the reliance on primaries, primary sources, in both the Massachusetts and, um, that, I think is, is really, really important. So, nice job. Thank you. Fantastic.
So I think this also looks, looks great. I signed up for an educator account to, to sample some of the materials that they had, because I was very curious about the program after looking at this presentation before the meeting. And just kind of going through, like, a few of the, just kind of like, you know, the lessons and how they set, set things up, it's just, you know, it's very thoughtfully done, and, you know, asking, I think, very, you know, age-appropriate questions, and getting them to, you know, not just to, you know, sort of learn things, but to think about things. I mean, I, one of the things I liked, just looking even in the kindergarten standards is, and this carries over into, into the first grade, is kind of like, oh, why do people have jobs? You know, it's like, why do people work? Like, things that, like, you know, later on, you think, just like, I guess that doesn't make sense, like, when you're in kindergarten. Like, it's a good idea to introduce this mysterious part of the, of the world.
Where do they go every day?
Or even just a basic, you know, basic question, just like, you know, why do we have rules? You know, it's like, we assume these are just easy answers, and I bet there are a lot of adults who couldn't give an easy answer to just like, why do we have rules? Like, what purpose do they serve? And so I think these are, you know, so, you know, really good questions, and like you said, inquiry-based, that we're sort of, we're, we're starting with a question that we're trying to think about. And the moment you start with a question, it gets, you know, rather than being told something, the moment someone asks you something, it automatically just makes you start to think and be a little bit more receptive to the other, the other possibilities. So I think that that, I think that that's been really nice. I had a couple of questions, two mainly. One was, is there an online, I mean, I know there is an online component. Is there any intention to use an online component in the elementary, since we don't have the one-to-one program?
Yeah, so really, it's teacher comfort level with it and teacher time. I mean, with a half hour every other day slated for social studies, it's, you know, how much time do you want to put to that? You know, you ask that question with science, too, and we use it with science. So, yes, I see teachers using it.
And I know a lot of the younger grade spans prefer to be able to project the information for students, because, you know, with first graders, to, to, they'll certainly use the print resources, but not every day, right? They'll use the workbooks, and they'll project it. It's quicker to be able to just pop it up on the screen, to, you know, go through the work together, the content together, as opposed to asking, you know, six-year-olds in the beginning of the school year to find page 72, right? So, so I think that there's a comfort level in having that technology and quickly being available to project pieces of the program as well, so.
My second question is about the, the, the third grade. And so they have sort of one system, and this is both, I guess, on the teaching and the student level, that, you know, there's a certain amount of materials, the, the materials are organized in a certain way, and then we have a different one for grade three, and then we're back to in grade four and five. Is, how are we thinking about trying to make that smooth and consistent and harmonious so that students moving from second to third grade are kind of still being taught social studies in the way that even if the content is now Massachusetts-specific? Does it support a lot of the same things that you were saying, that you liked so much about the McGraw-Hill content and?
Yeah, I think, Mr. Smaha brought up about the primary sources. There's still that focus, and there's the inquiry there. So, one of the examples they gave when talking about Native people is, it's an old metal and stone anchor-looking thing. And it poses questions like, what do you think it is? What do you think it's made of? So it's still that inquiry process that the students are learning in kindergarten, first and second grade for social studies, but it's carried over to third grade as well. I did do my research on what third grade is on Impact, and it's, all I had for the material was third grade, so I brought those. It's our communities. And I looked at it, and, very different, but, um, it is, it, it, it's still inquiry-based, but still very content-driven.
And, and I think some of the work, if I can add to that, some of the work that we would do as a committee next year, is ensure, as we're living through that first year, ensuring that we're consistent with vocabulary and terminology, so that there's not a big abrupt adjustment as kids move through, so that they can then make that seamless transition back into it in fourth grade as well.
And I would think that the, the third grade teachers would need slightly different professional development, because they're simply working with a different program and different, different materials.
Definitely.
Yeah, I think it sounds exciting. I do, I get a little worried when I see those sorts of textbooks sitting there, because I have this, like, please, like, let's not walk into a room and see kids sitting there. You know, like, it is a little bit...
So this is not a textbook, just so you know. It is a resource. It would sit, it's a research companion, so it would sit on a, on the bookshelf for kids to access if they needed to, to go get additional content. Most of what they're using in, this would be sort of a, you know, the class set would have them, and they'd grab them if they're doing research. But they would be more using the, yeah, the consumable workbook on a regular basis, and then the, the magazines. So that's really where most of the content is. In this, I know that this is a common, for McGraw-Hill, this is a common practice in science as well. They have like a research book in science. So it's not a, we're sitting and reading through the, the, you know, the textbook every day.
Yeah, and I mean, I think some, you know, a teacher could have a textbook and make history come alive.
Sure.
And another teacher, who might not feel as comfortable with the content, might rely more heavily on it. And so I think with this PD, it's also teaching those pedagogical strategies, like, how do you bring this, how do you make this come alive for students, so that they're not just feeling like they're, they're in this workbook and not understanding, you know? And I think those who, who love, I mean, those who love social studies and love teaching history can go about it in different ways. Sometimes the PD that is so important is to provide models and examples of, this is what it looks like in so-and-so's room.
Right.
And this is what, you know, and this is what it could look like in your room, if you feel more, if you feel more comfortable with the content. I think history is a tricky one, a science, too. But I think history, because it doesn't have the hand, it doesn't feel like it has the hands-on as much as the science, where the kids are exploring, they're looking at bugs, and they're doing the, you know, it's, it has such a heavy focus, really, on literacy. But isn't taught the way literacy is taught. You're using it as an avenue. So, you know, I think, I just want to make sure that we're not like, oh, good, we have a curriculum, we're all set.
Right, right, no.
But we're really continuing to, like, explore different ways to get kids locked into this. I know, so that when they get to high school, they're like, I can't wait. I mean, my daughter is in AP US History right now, and it is like, the world has opened up for her. She's like, oh, my gosh, I had no, like, and I want to make sure we're lighting that fire much, much earlier, so that when they, when they can really, really delve in, they already have such a strong foundation, but it's built on this joy of history, not like, when I did history, it was this, and then I did a worksheet, like, you know?
Right.
So I know that it's going to be exciting, I just want to make sure it's exciting across...
And, and I think that that's why, and to, to your point, Jay, that, you know, you can't just have a program dropped off and say, here you go. And that's why I think it's important that this committee is sustained all next year, because it's, you know, really, they're resources, that's all they are, right? So it's now the professional development and the support teachers need to make sure that there is, the content is equitable amongst all of our grade levels, but that the pedagogy is best practices for delivering the instruction, so.
And I'm thrilled with how you present, I'm thrilled with the way that this sort of rolled out. I'm thrilled to have your leadership. I mean, I think that's just incredible for the elementary classrooms across the district, to know that there's, there's this expert we can go to and say, hey, we're, we're struggling with this, how do we make this work? So, I, so kudos, well done on that. Thank you.
Just, just following up on that a little bit, I think that one of the keys, which has already been mentioned, and I know that Jay mentioned this as well, that is the use of primary sources. You know, when you're looking at the, like, the science frameworks have not only knowledge standards, but they have standards of practice. And so, and of course, science is something you can do. So it's not just that, you know, you teach, here, here are facts about science, but you can actually have kids do science. You can't quite have kids do history in the same way. We're not teaching historiography, it's not, it doesn't work the same way. But that use of primary sources, I think, really, is really one of the keys to getting that kind of engagement, because then it's, it's not just sort of like, oh, I'm reading a little story about some things that happened, it's just like, no, these were real people who were actually experiencing this and living this. Like, this is like, you know, it's like, this was my life, but this was their life. And there's a connection that you get with, you know, with using primary sources, that I think, you know, helps that kind of engagement and realizing that, just like, no, this wasn't something that just, you know, there's a temptation to always think like, oh, well, everything must have just had to have been the way it was, because that's actually how it happened. Like, everything always seems so much, you know, inevitable in retrospect, when in actuality, no, it could have been completely different, and the people living through that had no idea how it was going to turn out, and it could have turned out differently. And you really, you get that sense and that excitement by actually reading primary sources of people who, who, it wasn't history to them, it was, you know, current events.
Yeah, exactly.
And I think it's that criticality, too, like, looking at it and saying, like, whose, whose voice is missing here? Who's not? Like, I think this is the part where we really can engage in that, in teaching equity.
Absolutely.
And writing to those, I mean, I'm sure we'll look through that and be like, ooh, this is missing, this perspective, and so what should we do about that? Who do we write to to tell them that this is? I mean, I have my student teachers do that all the time, where they're like, God, there was one page on the Indigenous people, and I'm like, okay, good, so get your students excited about that. What are they going to do about that? Can they add their own supplement? I mean, there are ways that, you know, you can kind of play around with, I think, some of those books. And I think, and I totally agree with the primary sources. What I've noticed, and Mr. Moriello, help me out here, they can be complex for, what I've, I see my students struggling with at the elementary level, is that they want to use all these primary sources, but there's a lot of unpacking for young kids when you're looking at some of those primary sources. So there's a teaching, there's almost like a PD you do for elementary teachers around, how do you use primary sources in a way that is developmentally appropriate for kids without changing it? And I think that's what I, my teachers will sometimes say, I'll just rewrite it. I'm like, well, then it's not a primary source.
Not a primary source.
I'm like, no, the whole point is that they see the diary.
Right.
But it is, it can be very cumbersome, especially for someone who may struggle in reading or comprehend, and so then you're kind of giving this, and you're like, wait, shouldn't you be excited? And my student teachers are like, why aren't they excited? I'm like, because they don't understand it. Like, you have to break that down. So I think what we can easily use at the high school level is very, very different, obviously, for, for young kids.
I have my fifth graders into the Federalist Papers.
At least at Hamilton, then they'll be like...
Yeah, exactly. The questioning is key.
Yeah.
Asking the right questions to get the students to think about it. And at, at least third grade level, because I know they're the best, short snippets. So instead of reading the whole diary of William Bradford, focus on short quotes to get the meaning of it.
I think, clearly, we're excited.
Clearly, we're excited, too.
It's been a long time, and I know that it's been, I mean, we've been doing a wonderful job doing what we do, and I'm not questioning that, but it is great that I feel like the teachers will have the, the support behind them. So, so thank you, thank you, thank you for, for taking this on and making this happen. Do we have to vote?
How about a motion?
Do we have to, a motion?
Do we have to vote?
It is, it's a new program.
All right. Ms. Plowman and then Mr. Fenley, all in favor?
Absolutely.
That is unanimous.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all that work.
Thank you for the work, Cass.
All right. Are there any subcommittee reports? I feel like I'm here all the time, that there's got to be something, but...
Do you want to talk about the evaluation committee meeting?
Sure, we can share that we met.
Yeah. I was gonna, I meant to, I was gonna send out a message and just say that we, we did meet last night, and thank you all for your incredibly thoughtful work on, on your particular evaluation, and we met for quite a few hours. Time flew by. All of a sudden, we were like, oh, my gosh, it's nine o'clock, and we couldn't believe how much fun we've been having. But we, we worked, we worked hard on it, and we, we went through it all. It'll, we're kind of just fine-tuning it, but I think it's mostly done, so we will send it off to Tracy, it'll be in your packet...
June 22nd.
For the next one, so whatever, before. And then, one of the things we wanted to mention was, if there's something in there that you see that feels like it doesn't represent something you had written, or you want us to, to take another look, then you can send me an email, and, and we can kind of talk through that before the 22nd. Is there anything else you wanted to say?
I would say that we, we did it a little bit differently this year than it has been in the past, so, in previous years, the committee has tried to kind of combine people's thoughts into one narrative, so there's been, like, you know, when the comments, it, it sort of reads as if one person wrote it, but we, you know, it's been trying to incorporate, you know, different people's thoughts and, and sentences and so forth. This year, we did that just for the, for the, basically for the overall summative evaluation, just kind of like the broad strokes. When we got into specific goals, and especially the standards, we actually just excerpted people's individual reviews with kind of just like their names attached to it. So trying to cover the, again, the breadth of comments, so sometimes a lot of people mention the same things, so we might only put one person's comment in there. But trying to kind of capture a breadth of people's actual words, and just kind of cite it to the person who made them. So it's a little, a little bit different this year, but...
So we hope that you're happy with it, and we hope that it will provide Dr. Brown lots of good information.
Just a question about process. Do, so do we go through all of that in the next meeting?
So we will, we were talking about this last night, and we, and I think we decided that we would present, like, a short PowerPoint.
Okay.
With, basically, I mean, what we've done is basically take the averages, right? So what you'll see is, if we go through it and we go, okay, who said this, this, and then we tally it up, and then we sort of pick the one that most represents the committee. So we'll talk through the ratings, and then, I will not, we're not going to read through, but we might just pull out a few excerpts that we think really help us to tell that story.
Good idea.
And then we'll open it up to, you know, you can make your own comments, obviously, at that point. So I think that's how we'll do it, it'll just be probably like four or five slides, we were thinking.
And I think, and I think, and you'll have a chance to, before the meeting, to review all of, all of it, so. Yeah, so if, if there's, if there's something that you feel is, like, left out, or didn't get appropriate emphasis, then, you know, let it, let us know, and we can, we can take that into consideration.
We can hold it. I mean, you can say, I'm not comfortable, hold it. I mean, that's fine, and we go back to the committee, or, I'm comfortable with this, but I will make a few comments of my, I mean, that, so that meeting will be your chance to, to highlight something that you feel may not have been highlighted. And then we can always go back and add it after, which I think we've done in the past, gone back to it. Does that sound?
Yep.
Sounds great. Great. Ooh, it's exciting. All right. You excited?
I am. That's a superintendent, it's like it to be valued in public.
I would not like that.
It's like the witch trials, huh?
It's like your birthday, you don't know what's in the box when you...
It's so exciting. I'm so, we do that all, that's how we get, it's what we do every, almost every year. Like, whenever we're reappointed, it's a full, the whole department votes, the whole department sees everything, and you have to leave the room, so at least you get to sit here. I literally, like, okay, Jen, we'll text you when we're done. I'm like, okay, yeah, it's bizarre, yeah. So, so this feels a little bit more authentic.